It's fine. It'll be okay.
Geneel Sett?
I am.
Thumbs up from Brendan. Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, July 19th, 2022 Warren Township High School Board Meeting. As we start every open session, we'd like to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you all don't mind rising.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. First up is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda tonight? If not, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Demonte. Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
It was seconded by Tom.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
No problem.
But, yes.
Okay. And Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Did I get everyone a vote?
I believe so.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Next up is recognitions. I don't believe we have any recognitions tonight. Am I correct? Okay. Next up is reception of the visitors. I did not check the book. I don't know if we've already signed up, but if anybody would like to address the board, they're welcome to up to three minutes to address the board. Please keep in mind, yes. It's a chance to address the board as that meant as a conversation, but we would definitely like to hear what you would like to talk about. Knowing the audience, I think we're good to move on forward right now. Next up is the president's report. Just a couple of things to talk about. First thing I want to remind everybody about an email that the board members received about volunteering for Rib Fest. I know Kathy sent out some information where we can volunteer for Rib Fest. I think we've talked about how the board can become more engaged with the community. I think that's a great opportunity for the board members to volunteer some time there. I believe some administrators are going to hopefully volunteer at the same time. So get back to Kathy. You don't have to, please do not respond as to everybody on the email, but respond to Kathy if you can make it, and that would be fantastic. The other thing that's on there next on there is board member topics for future meetings. I've not heard anything from board members, but again, if there's anything you'd like to talk about at future board member, future board meetings, let me know. And then next up is the announcement of the 2022-2023 school board meeting schedule. This has already been made public before. This is just kind of a formality. Now we're posting it out on the website. Then to a topic that came up last week, and that's the board member vacancy update. So we, we do have a vacancy on the board. Bensy is no longer with us. And I'm looking for my notes on this, so I apologize. So according to the timeframe, we're going to go forward with that. We do have resumes that we're going to review. It's nice, always nice when you have more than one applicant for a position. Our plan is to continue with a special board meeting on August 2nd to interview the candidates. Then shortly after that, we will be contacting the candidates to let them know what direction we'll be going in. And then on our board meeting on August 16th, we'll be announcing who that candidate is, and they'll become part of our board. It's a, it's a pretty straightforward process. The toughest part is going to be on August 2nd when we meet, when we interview all the candidates. For people in the audience, what we do for these interviews is we come up with a list, we develop a list of questions. Every candidate is asked the exact same questions, because sometimes during an interview, you can steer to one direction or another. This way, all candidates get to ask the exact same questions, and the last question is always, what questions do you have to the board? Or like any interview that you've been on, what else do we need to know about you? That's the fairest way to conduct interviews, because that way they're all responding to the same set of questions. And likewise, we all take turns asking questions. So we, each board member gets a chance to interview with the candidate. Any questions on the process? I think we're good. Awesome. I'm looking forward to learning more about the candidates and get this going. Next up are committee reports. I'm not sure that there's any committee reports for this week. This, this is cruising all very quickly now. We're on to superintendent's report with a superintendent, a new superintendent. First meeting will give us a brief update on school district happening, events, and items for the board to consider.
Sure. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. So briefly, I did want to just acknowledge families in the community, including our own students, staff, families, as well as in our neighboring school districts that were impacted by the shooting at the Highland Park Parade. Specifically, just want to send out our special thoughts to the family of Dr. Roberts, who is one of our fellow Lake County superintendents. And she was shot, and her son, her little, she's got a little boy that was shot and still struggling in the hospital. So special thoughts go out to our, our fellow school leaders for that very, this has impacted a lot of people, but really unique situation there. Let's see, we do have in November, the annual joint conference in Chicago. And so if there are any board members that are interested in that, they can let us know. We've got just some information that we could get from you. That'd be great. It's been really fun and exciting being part of the district here for a couple of weeks. I did share with the board initially a draft entry plan, and I shared an updated version of that with staff my first week here. Really focuses on the first 121 days, trying to get to know all the individuals and the groups, the different people that work here and community members here in the community. I'll get to meet a whole lot more people once school starts up, and I'm looking forward to that. A lot of the people here are helping me by spending a lot of time right now. I'm really grateful to them. A lot of our administrators specifically, but also like our custodial staff, our transportation staff already have been spending some time with me, so I can help understand their processes and how we do everything here. Let's see, a couple of our administrators that are here tonight, actually probably most of them, if, if there's an administrator here tonight, they probably were doing walkthroughs with me at some point. We did walkthroughs of both campuses, the transportation center and the transition center for multiple hours. They took me up on the roof, so I could look at the roofs. I saw the locker rooms, the much spoken about locker rooms, walked around the outside of the facility to try to just make sure I understand kind of the whole, the whole picture here of the school district. And I'll continue to try to share, sharing with staff on a weekly basis and with the board on a weekly basis, just what I'm learning and those activities. So the thing I'm looking most forward to is the job shadows. So we've got a handful of job shadows that we've got planned here, so I can not only work alongside our teachers, our teaching staff, but also the other half of our staff that do things like drive buses and our cleaning and making sure that our facilities can stay as nice as they are. So looking forward to working alongside some of them. Let's see, real quickly, the school applied for and was awarded a $50,000 grant in state dollars recently that we're allocating for roofing. That's really great, I think, for the community. That's money that's good to have here. So I appreciate the administration and the board for applying for that earlier in the year. We don't have any FOIA reports or monthly student reports. Let's see, I am planning on giving an update for this year's district priorities here in the next month or two. There were, I think, seven areas in the strategic, most recent strategic plan update that you received from Dr. Algrim. I think for the most part, the best thing for me to do here is I'm getting to learn and understand and work alongside people and understand your history and where we think we need to be moving forward and where we think we need to be now that we have what probably should be considered a new chapter for the school district with the referendum passing. There's a lot of work that needs to go around talking about not only how do we conserve and continue to provide the resources that we've been able to provide in the past, but how do we plan appropriately and effectively so that the future use of those dollars can be protected and the trust that the community gave us, we can honor that and respect that. So knowing that that's probably a new chapter as we move forward, I think probably what I'll propose as far as strategic priorities for this year, we'll, we'll probably focus on some of those areas that were marked as ongoing. There's just a few of them. They're things like the, let's see, identifying and increasing dual credit access, some career pathway work, some diversity and equity work, some work around multilingual capacity of our website and communication system. So we'll probably come back and say, here in the next month or two, here's where I think our priorities are going to be next year as far as administrative work, but then also say, there's some important work that the board needs to do around visioning moving forward into our next chapter. So that's my report in a nutshell. I think we'll hand it off to Dr. Engel for a treasuries report unless any of the board members have any questions for anything I've covered. Okay, thank you.
So I have a truncated treasury report here for the month of June. We, we are going through an audit right now, and we probably won't have finalized numbers till September, but I'm going to go through it as of right now. So across all balances right now, we have $38.1 million at month's end. As tax revenues have come in, the revenues will continue to go up. The district did receive two large Lake County distributions this month for the month of June. One was $12.7 million, and the other one was $9 million on June 30th, so right before the end of the fiscal year. To give you guys a comparison, FY21, there's about $53.8 million in total revenue that came in versus $52.2 for this year for FY22, a difference of about $1.5 million. And operating revenues so far year-to-date, $68.7 million in expenditures and $65.9 million revenues without adjustments for right now. So we're also in the process of, we have a tentative budget that we'll probably be looking at a finance committee meeting here pretty soon, and from there, hopefully a tentative budget for the upcoming board meeting in August. Any questions as of right now?
One question I have, that's not necessarily on what you had tonight, but I just want to make sure we say this out loud in open session. So tax referendum was recently passed. I think that's great news for the community as a whole, which is going to mean at some point additional revenue to the school. When will we start seeing the results of that additional revenue?
We won't see it until tax year '22, and it'll be during the second half of tax year '22. So at the second half of school year '24, the latter half will have half a payment that year, and then for FY25, we'll have the full amount.
So roughly, what month and what year will we see that?
I would imagine our first distribution will probably be March-ish of
Of '24?
Yeah. So it's going to be
March of '24, roughly. Okay. And the reason I wanted to bring that up again, because you know, I'm conscious, it's, it's down the road, but I don't want anybody to think, hey, you know what? Life is pretty good now. We have additional revenue coming in. Money is still tight. We need to act appropriately. And even if the revenue was coming in sooner, I think as we're obligated to the taxpayers in the town, we said if this does pass, we're going to do the best we can to not make it last X number of years, but X plus a number of years. So I just want to make sure we're all aware that we've got to be very strong stewards of our money right now going forward. I mean, we, we got this additional funding, so we need to make sure that we make it last as long as possible. Okay.
Be sure to notify you when we get our first payment in. How does that sound?
I'm sure we'll all hear about it, so. If there's nothing else, I'd like to move on to the consent agenda. Any changes to the consent agenda?
Refresh.
Refresh. Correct me if this is off then. Okay. I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which includes personnel recommendations per Exhibit A, numbers 1 through 17, as posted, and athletics activities and volunteer personnel recommendations per Exhibit B, numbers 1B through 12B as posted, and number 17, Kenneth Bates, new hire promotion, the payment of the bill is dated July 19th, 2022, in the amount of $8,6,316.32. The regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of June 21st, 2022, and the second reading and approval of the district board policy and exhibits.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez. Mr. Drake?
Abstain.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
And Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
We have three yes and one abstention. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we're on to new business. The first item is the declaration of the results of the June 28th referendum question.
All right. So the Lake County clerk canvassed the votes following the June 28th, 2022 primary election, and the abstract of votes was certified on July 15th. The following votes for the referendum question was 7,405 yes votes and 6,476 no votes. The 60 cent operating tax increase passed by the voters in our district.
That's fantastic. Next item is the approval of amendments to the 2223 Student Parent Handbook. Is that Dr. Keely?
Good evening. I'll just kind of run down the memo and just kind of try to summarize that for you for the changes that were made. Introductions, Chapter 1 and District Overview, school board names were updated. With the changes, staff names and titles were updated again as changes happened over the summer. Chapter 2, School Calendar, bell schedules for all playing were updated. There was a slight change in the middle of the day. Chapter 15, Athletic Program, the IHSA, key provisions regarding IHSA rules were updated. We typically don't, we, we get it whenever we get it. We don't have control over when we get it. So that's when we update it in the handbook. Student, Chapter 16, Student Records and Privacy. We added information about the surveys. That way, we're not having to send out separate emails to parents when we're doing those surveys. That's just part of the handbook. So parents can see those at the start of each year. We do have a new program in Panorama. That survey will start taking place twice a year now, hopefully for many years to come. So we wanted to make sure our parents are notified of that. Chapter 17, again, parent notification of the Panorama Survey. This is something that, again, instead of sending email out twice a year to parents, they would be notified in the handbook at the start of the year. Any questions?
Thank you. I move to approve amendment, Amendment 1 to the 2223 Student Parent Handbook as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Sorry, was that Mr. Drake?
Mr. Drake, yes.
I'm sorry. Motion by Schultz and second by Drake. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Four yes. Motion carries.
Next up, we're looking for approval of substitute teacher pay rates for the 2223 school year.
Yeah, this is just something that the district has a, a pattern of doing every year for the last few years to make sure that we are keeping pace with other school districts. So we budget a moderate increase annually. The proposal's a $5 increase this upcoming year.
Questions from board members? I move to approve the pay rates for substitute teachers and substitute teachers covering leaves for the 2223 school year as presented.
Second.
Second by Demonte. Roll call.
I almost said that myself.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Four yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is an approval of administrator and non-union employee contracts and compensation for the 2223 school year. And I just want to make one quick comment. I appreciate what the administrators did last year. I want to point out again that the administrators last year volunteered to take a pay freeze. It was not forced upon them. They volunteered to take a pay freeze to help with our budgeting last year. So thank you to all of you individually and as a group. It was a great gesture, and it was greatly appreciated.
Yeah, so the, the recommendation from me for this year for, you know, most of our employees are part of an, the association, and so their annual increases are negotiated as a whole. But we do have a small number of staff comparatively that are not part of that association, so that we need as a, as, you need as a school board to allocate dollars towards that annually. So the recommendation I'm providing this year is a 3.5% raise for all of our non-union employees this year.
Questions? I move to approve the administrators and non-union employee contracts and compensation for the 2223 school year.
Second.
Second by Martinez. Roll call.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Four yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next such, next up is a discussion of the facility use rates for the 2223 school year.
Yeah, so this, this isn't something that we're asking you to vote on tonight, but we do, we would like probably vote next month, I'm guessing, Dr. Engel. But it might be worthwhile for the board to have some conversation today and just give us some direction. So generally, the cost of our facility use, the fees that we give to other organizations for using our facilities, it's been the same fee structure for the last handful of years. So that might be something to consider looking at as a school board. There are some positives and there's some risks associated with that. Increasing that would definitely increase the revenue for the district to better cover the cost of those facility rentals. The other thing to consider on the other side, and then you can discuss it, is those fees are generally relayed down to the students or children in the community. Most of the time, the, the usage of these facilities are by feeder programs. I think that's accurate. Is that accurate? Most of the facility uses by feeder programs. And so, yeah, that cost would just get down to our families here. So, but we, for the last three years, we presented this just for an annual approval. It hasn't increased. But given some conversation around asking other community members through the referendum to consider an increase of what they're contributing, I thought it'd be most beneficial if the board talked through how they want to approach facility use fees.
Some questions. You do too. You have, you talk.
Can you help me understand your comment around the feeder programs and the cost actually would kind of cascade back down to the students?
Yeah.
So what groups would those be, and how does that work?
Great. So maybe Mr. Keely or Dr. Keely can help me here a little bit, but generally, I'm looking at the list of organizations that rent the facilities. Warren Youth Football is the first one on here. So if Warren Youth Football is charging a fee to their, the kids in their program, and we increase the amount of money that we charge Warren Youth Football to use our facilities, they're just going to parlay that cost down, that cost increase down. And so the children or the families that have kids in Warren Youth Football are going to end up increasing the amount of money cost for them to register for the program. Does that help?
So.
So some examples of the, the organizations would be Warren Youth Football, Junior Blue Devils, Kearney Demons, the Swim Club. There's some track programs, lacrosse programs. I mean, basically, you can go down through our athletic programs, and there's some type of feeder program that's using our facilities.
Are there any groups that don't fall into that categorization?
There's three different classes. There's Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3. Class 3 is anybody that's pretty much wants to rent out a space or use a space like a, a member of the community. From, from a business office kind of standpoint, I just would like to be able to cover our costs and our expenses, because a lot of the community usage, I'm talking non-feeder, non, non-for-profit, and non, other governmental agencies are typically beyond the regular school day and kind of in our overtime, if you will, for security, for cleaning, for any type of staff, for buildings and grounds maintenance. So I'm not saying that we would necessarily advocate for a category 1 increase or a category 2, but maybe slightly 2, maybe. Look at category 2 and category 3, but category 1 meaning the other government agencies and direct feeders coming into us. We just need to tier it up a little bit better.
Is our philosophy, and I should know this, but I don't, bend to break even, cover our costs versus use this as a way to make money?
It's been run as, as the best outcome is to break even. And I would even argue right now, we have not broken even since I've been here.
So if, if there's a student club, for example, they're not paying any fees, right?
Correct.
If we've got a student club, they're not paying any fees. If it's a feeder program, the fee is less than just a, a non-feer program type organization.
So a couple of questions. One of them was exactly what you had just talked about, was breaking even. I know hourly wages and benefits increase, so if we haven't kept up with that, I'd be curious to know, what is our break even dollar point? I'm not sure I'm in the group of needing to make a profit off of community members if they live within or their business resides within Warren's boundaries, particularly if they've been strong and staunch supporters of our school even recently. But the one thing that kind of came, I guess here's a clarifying question. So I see where the, like rent a room rate. So define room. Like what if I'm renting the entire field house versus a classroom? Am I still paying the same rate?
That's another thing in our school that we need to kind of break down, but typically, like the field house, the auditorium, it's a little bit more expensive, but
So that doesn't show up here?
It doesn't show up. It comes to when you go to actually rent the facility and which, which room that you'd want to. There's kind of a drop-down bar.
Perfect. So it exists. It just didn't exist in front of me. So that was one thing that kind of brought, just kind of caught my attention. The other is, is a newfound focus and concern of security. So also, depending on when people are using our buildings, do we have staff here? If we don't have staff here, who's making sure the doors shut? Are we following up with those organizations? Do we charge them if we find a door open when they're not here and risk losing your ability? So I just wanted to be sure somewhere in this rental agreement, which is maybe, you know, it's kind of outside the purview of our dollar discussion, but it, it's, it's been in the news. It's been on a lot of our parents' minds, but just constantly having our doors open and shut and propped open, and it does worry me a little bit. So is there a mention of that in the rental agreement? And should there be?
As far as liability, obviously liability insurance
Yeah, the $1 million.
A billion dollars, correct.
Yeah.
As far as security staffing, we currently do not, I, I can't tell you right now that we staff Monday through Sunday from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM every night. We, we don't.
Yeah.
So some of the outside facility rentals, we do need to bring on additional people at additional hours that
Is that just extending house security, or is
Yeah, it's an extension of house security, correct. Yep. And then obviously, they need any type of maintenance to, to be there to set up, break down, also any type of custodial after an event or before an event. That's, you know.
Those are my questions. Thanks.
Absolutely. My perspective, absolutely, we should be at least covering all these costs. I mean, is it, is it kind of a user fee? Absolutely, it's a user fee. But we can't ask the general public to help subsidize feeder programs or community groups. That's on them. I mean, we're, as a school and as a town, we're not in a position to subsidize all that. You know what? To be honest, I'm okay if we covered cost plus a little bit, because as much as we can document our costs, there's always going to be other things that we don't think about that are additional to costs to it. You know, I, I don't want to sound harsh that we should be charging, you know, cost plus for this, but yeah, we should. I mean, those are the constraints that we're under right now, and we need to be more fiscally responsible. Not going to beat a dead horse, but it's, it's, it's on these programs to, you know, cover their own expenses. Because, because oftentimes what doesn't get, and the reason I'm saying cost plus, I know it's a business term, but we can lay out, you know, the cost of personnel, maintenance, cleanup, and all that. But what it doesn't include is wear and tear on the gym floors, wear and tear on the turf, wear and tear on the facilities. So I'm not being mean saying we turn a profit, but we, we have to start thinking about all those things. My assumption is at some point, we're going to have to bring additional security for these events. That's probably not in the current budget for these programs right now. So I want to make sure, to Tony's point, everybody's like, we're secure with, you know, we've, we've talked about this before at security meetings.
talked about this before at security meetings, our doors tend to be wide open at some points during the day for these groups. Times have changed, we can't have that. And if, you know, if community, you know, groups say that's getting to be too expensive, then we'll, they'll just have to turn them away.
If we, I say we, probably you, Mike, have you looked at 50 and 56 to see if we're in line with their facility rental fees?
I have not, no.
I'm curious if people come to us because we're the best deal around. Yeah, I don't know. Like, or do they have favorable terms? I mean, we're not the only place either that rents facilities and Park District, I'm sure has places as well. But curious if we were in line with other public entities in town. I'm not sure.
I think in addition, a lot of schools have tried to go with your school.
We have really nice facility, high schools a lot of times have a lot of.
High schools have a lot of facilities, middle schools, so.
Our community is really, yeah.
Great. I think, I think that gives us some marching orders and we'll come back next month with a recommendation, if that's okay?
Absolutely. Thank you. Next up is a, an approval of asbestos abatement project at the Oak Plain Campus, not to exceed $40,000. Dr. Engel?
Here we go. Yeah, the asbestos abatement project's necessary at the Oak Plain Campus due to leaks from a continuous roofing issues plaguing the school. These leaks have caused about 240 linear feet of asbestos pipe insulation and some tile to become fractile. We're asking the Board of Education to approve this, not to exceed amount, so the work can take place prior to school opening.
Is this going to be a bid?
Yes.
I was more shocked with prior to school opening. You're going to do an entire bid and the, these companies have availability and we start school in like a month?
I, I've.
Yeah.
I've got the specs, I've got it already legally published. I'm just asking for not to exceed amounts. All right, as soon as we come back with the bids, we can move forward. So it's, it's, yeah, it's already in motion. Thank you. Anything else? We needed to get it done. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
There's no other discussion. I move to approve the asbestos abatement project at the Oak Plain Campus, not to exceed $40,000, as presented.
Second.
Second by Martinez. Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez. Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Demati?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is an approval to reauthorize the resolution for the treasurer's participation in an Illinois School District Liquid Asset Fund, the well-known ISDLAF.
It's pretty popular these days. Rates have gone way up, so yeah. Want me to go through it?
Please do.
It's an annual, we, we ask for it pretty much annually for the resolution allowing us to continue to invest in the Illinois School District Liquid Asset Fund. We also participate in the state one as well. So this is just a, a formality that we have with PMA.
Discussion. I move to reauthorize the resolution for the treasurer's participation in the Illinois School District's Liquid Asset Fund, the ISDLAF.
Second by Drake.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Drake. Mr. Demati?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
Next up is an approval of the land farm lease agreement with the Peterson Grain Farms.
Back in 2016, October 16, the Board of Education approved a lease with Peterson Grain Farms for a portion of the Stern School Road property. The grain farms have been farmed many parcels like this in Lake County for decades, and they've been excellent tenants. They've paid their rent twice a year on time and been very timely, and they'd like to continue the lease of our property. So this will give them one year beginning January 1st of 2023 and put them forward for one more year of renewal. There's a grand total of 64.7 accessible acres to be farmed. The lease price is $170.63 per acre, so a rent annually of $11,039.44, which is. December CPI increase as well.
Which is what?
In line with December CPI increase.
So, so my question is going to be, and this isn't going to be a shock, how's this compared to market value where we could lease the property out to elsewhere?
I don't think that's a shock, and I was going to ask it too, because.
I mean, it's, it's great, they're good tenants, it runs like clockwork. However, what's it compared to market value for leasing it out? I don't want to price them out because they're good tenants, but are they getting a great bargain from us?
But this is different because they don't have kids within our boundaries, and this is a for-profit, you know, I, I don't know, this feels different. I think it's a great question you're asking. I agree.
That, that's a great question. We would have to do a study on what's the land's viability besides farmland for right now.
Well, I'm thinking.
That's not the question.
That's my question.
What do other people charge per acre?
Yeah.
Five miles down the road.
I mean, is this rate competitive for the market? Is it giving them a great bargain? Are we getting a great bargain? I mean, we're being asked to vote on this, and I, I'm not sure if this is good or bad.
Great question. I, I would definitely need to get back to you on that, to be quite honest, on, on the local.
I would speculate, I wasn't there, when they set the initial rate, they looked around and decided who else is charging what?
Yeah.
Whether or not CPI has kept up with that, I don't know. But I think, I think it's a question we should ask, and we should try to find out if we can.
And, and some of it could be based on convenience. They're the closest person that can actually use the land. But yeah, I, I would be in favor of tabling this and getting some more information.
On the other side of the coin, it's 65 acres. That's nothing around here. They could walk away if they, if we increase it by a dollar. So I would be curious what other people are charging. I think we should find that out.
Yeah.
But this is a 65 acre field. There are 1,000 acre fields around here.
Is there a, I mean, this is only a one-year lease. I mean, we could also just approve the, you know, year lease and then with the understanding that this is going to be revisited. Or do you want to delay a month? Would they be out of lease if you delay?
No. No, that would be okay. My, my, my perspective is let's delay the month, let's do some due diligence and, and find out. I just, I just think that's a habit we need to get into instead of just approving it. Let's do some due diligence and make sure that we're in line with everything.
Okay, we'll work on that.
Thank you, Dr. Engel. Next up is an approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Warren Township High School District 121 and the Gurnee School District 56 for the use of food service facilities and equipment.
Correct. So we, we got back an IGA. We shared it with D56. This would cover the cost of electricity, gas, wear and tear on equipment, also the depreciation schedule for our ovens, our stoves, all of our, pretty much, equipment for cooking at a rate of $2,500 per month over all 12 months, so about $30,000 a year coming back to the district.
And real quick note, the draft that the board got last week was for $2,000 a month. And so the updated final copy is for $2,500 per month.
It's like you're anticipating a question.
Take that on board, I'm pleased.
The, the draft copy that you had got in the board doc, board docs last week, in that draft, the rent was $2,000 a month, or the payment was $2,000 a month, and that's increased since then to $2,500 after we finished working through the details with the other district.
Discussion. If not, I move to approve an intergovernmental agreement between Warren Township High School and Gurnee School District 56 for the use of food service facilities and equipment.
Second.
Second by Martinez. Roll call.
Mr. Demati?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Now we're on to old business. The first topic is referendum update. And before I hand it over, I would just like to take this opportunity again to thank the community, the administration. There were so many people involved in the referendum. It was a huge community effort. Thank you to the vote yes group. I know that's not their technical name, but that's what they've been known as. I mean, they've done an outstanding job of just inundating the community with information. So again, thanking them for their hard work. We're going to be able to do so many different things going forward and saving so many programs because of your hard work. So I just want to thank everybody involved in that process.
In addition, really quick, in addition, really quick, I want.
But they showed up every meeting and they were enthusiastic. I humbly appreciate Dr. Engel, Chris, Dr. Keely, they too really deserve.
I would, I would jump in here as well. So again, also, big appreciation to everybody who brought awareness to the community about the topic and the work that went into this. I saw that, I saw everything from kind of an outside perspective, and it was really, really amazing. Even my wife at one point commented to me about just the conversation that was having, that the community was having and the support that the community had. And as a third-party person now coming into the family, it was really great, really great to see. I met with a community leader last week and just was asking him, you know, what do you think the, the strengths of the community are? And he said, he kind of chuckled and said, strength of the community is you've got a lot of community support. If you haven't figured that out with passing the referendum, then you need to keep looking. So we appreciate the, the trust. Really, this is a, a sign of trust that the community has given us. So really quick, I want, I want to make sure everybody's clear on the big picture items. So we committed to maintain the eight-period day. So luckily, we don't have to start planning to take that off. That's going to, we were able to continue to move forward, assuming we have an eight-period day. If this had not passed, we would have started conversations on my first day about how do we transition down. So that's good for students. We committed to improving academic support and mental health services. We've already been able to post some positions, and those, some of those were on the personnel report to support students immediately this upcoming year. We committed to continuing to offer band, drama, choir, and other student activities and clubs. We've been able to hire some of those support positions already. We committed to continuing to offer athletic programming across all grade levels. You saw some of those on the personnel report tonight. And we committed to reducing student fees to levels comparable with other Lake County high school districts. We were able to just this last week formally notify parents about fees. So I really appreciate everybody, the administration's effort here to very quickly help our families and our students see some of the impact. I do think it's important to recognize that while we're doing that immediately, the money isn't coming in right away. So the way that I'm looking at it is that if, if I have, if I have a child in seventh grade this upcoming year, those are the first group of students that are really going to start feeling the full impact of, of the school district starting to receive those monies. So we still got some time. We are starting, we're going to pony up some of the resources now, and we're just going to make things work. We're going to have to squeeze to make things work again or continue to work for another year and a half. And, but I do think the fact that it's this year's seventh graders that are receiving that support, just really is a testament to the, the kind of foresight that our community has and our board had around, we need to talk about this as soon as possible. We need to keep talking about this in the community so they understand the impact. So that's all I've got about that. Make sure everybody understands the timeline and what we committed to.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
So one is, I had people from other, that I know, from other communities look in and say, what, you guys were able to get a referendum passed during, when inflation is a rate that it is and the economy is what it is, and they were just in shock of how much the community was willing to support something like this, given the economic conditions. So, you know, it's something we didn't necessarily draw a whole lot on, but others from other communities were like, it's amazing that, that you were able to get that done. And when I say you or I, also want to point out the yes group. I was, there was a lot of hard informational kind of work, and that was done. And just the kids are going to benefit from making sure we have the resources to provide programming, which is, is amazing. On the other side, I think we all know people that were in the no column, the 6,476. So, you know, if you weren't going to mention it, I also was, that those people, we represent all people within the boundaries. And going forward, if we can, and I know we started that tonight, but just make sure that every dollar that we spend is spent wisely with some increased scrutiny, not that we didn't before, but we need to honor those people as well for whatever reason of why they voted, what they did. That's the least we can do to make sure everyone feels like their voice is heard. So we have the resources, thanks to the yes group in, in main part, and, but also just a newfound kind of look at every dollar that we're spending. So I hate to break it to you, Mike, but you know, you know, it's, you're going to get, it's just, you're going to get questions. And it's like, maybe we paused briefly because we bought an appliance a couple of months ago, but you know, there's going to be more of that. And so some, I guess the ask I would have from the administration is just real sound justification on how every purchase impacts kids and their education going forward, so we can be sure that we spend these dollars wisely.
Risk of being redundant.
Go for it.
It's amazing what a community can do when they pull together, but make no doubt, there was a subset of citizens that are in this room that organized an effort I've never been part of, and I want to thank you for that. And the oath we took to, to echo Tony's point, not that we didn't scrutinize every dollar, we, we skimmed and saved, but I think we need to take that up even another level. We need to maintain the public's trust in the trust they've placed in us. And, and extend that now, after Highland Park, extend that to the safety of our kids and what that means. It's a, it's an important commitment. So thank you out there for everything you did.
Thank you, everyone. Next item on our old business is the registration fees for the 2223 school year. You want to talk about this, Dr. Engel? I can read through it. Really glad to see this on the agenda because it just really shows, you know, we talked about the changes we were going to implement if the referendum passed. I think this was one of the most visible ones, that are we actually going to reduce the fees. As Dr. Wispin said, the letters went out, we are reducing fees. So starting this coming school year, the registration fees are $200. Parking fees, $200. Athletic fees, $200. And club fees, $50. I don't have the prior numbers in front of me, but I believe if the referendum hadn't passed, registration fees were going to go up to $600. So I think this is a very visible sign to the community that we are going to do what we said we're going to do. So I think this is great to see this out here in public. Next up on our old business, a discussion on the district's fee collection process. We talked about this recent discussions and how we collect student fees. I don't know if we want to continue a conversation on this, or?
Yeah, so last month, I wasn't sitting in this chair, but I was sitting out there. So there was just discussion around the fee process. Ms. Martinez brought that up, so we wanted to make sure that the board had an opportunity to continue that discussion. I know we tried to answer a handful of questions over the last month. So yeah, if the board has any thoughts or, or discussion they want to lead with us right now, I'd love to participate in that.
We received a, a handful of really good data on this. To be honest, I'm still kind of thinking about what we should be doing going forward. My, my initial thoughts is kind of like what was expressed during that meeting is I don't have facts to push, you know, to basis on. But I just want to make sure that we're doing as good of a job as we can with the freshman students and the sophomore students to let the parents know there's other avenues they can go down. A lot of times, the student fees don't come up until it's a prom or a graduation, when they're juniors and seniors. I want to make sure we're getting in front of this, right when they're entering the high school, here are some programs that can help you out with fees, with meals. school, here are some programs that can help you out with fees, with meals, with lunches, I mean, these are, there's programs that don't come out of our pocket, there's funds available to them, I think we owe it to the subset, actually, a pretty large subset of our, our student bases to make sure that they know about all these programs. I'm not saying we're not doing that, but I just want to make sure we're doing an outstanding job of that. And some of these issues will go away on their own then.
It's definitely been communicated to both bookkeepers at both sides of town, and especially Laura Lemus over at the O'Plane campus. We've been also working with Sherry Conway, we're getting the word out most definitely, especially at Chromebook Pickup coming up, or also, for those families that do need assistance, that do need that additional need, we are going to be at Chromebook Pickup with a direct cert table and helping people apply both in English and in Spanish there as well, but again, reiterating the importance of it, the payment plans, everything else, the options, so.
That's outstanding, if there's anything we can do as a board to help with this process, let us know, because it's only going to help the students and the families, so this is outstanding.
Okay, all right.
I'm kind of the same.
That's why I'm quiet on it.
It's okay.
And one thing, one thing we can do is, we could just acknowledge, hey, this is a really important topic, it impacts our students, part of the fees conversation we've been having since we talked about the referendum, because we knew they were high, and we committed to lower them, we could say, let's see what happens here this year, watch it, and maybe, I think we will always have a fee collection process that we need to address, and, but maybe it's a little different in the fall.
I like that we have the...
That's true.
Okay, well, now that we went down to $200 registration.
Yeah.
Then how do we start working with that?
That's a great point, just a baseline.
Yeah, I'm not trying to be negative or skeptical, but I think a lot of the situations where their parents are having troubles paying fees, they lower registration fees, you know, they're not, they're not saving that money for other registration fees, they could be saving it for, you know, optional things like food, rent, those things, so hopefully it improves our situation, but I would, if I was to project out, I'd say it's going to have minimal impact going forward.
Do we ever hold the family's hand? So you say, okay, we have 100 students, and they... Are we shooting them in the mail saying, hey, homecoming? Like, are we doing, are we taking steps to prevent and help, right? Because I, as a parent, if I know, you know, whether I know that I owe the money, or it was a, whatever the scenario is, you know, maybe it would be like, it would be something where they pick up the phone and say, hey, I just got this email, how can you work with me, right? And then whatever the arrangement is, then that allows that student then to attend homecoming, and it allows a student to attend prom, it's just heartbreaking to me that because of a That to me, I just feel, I feel strongly about it.
To answer your question, I was going to say partially, we don't do that entirely. Obviously, there's the monthly kind of balances that go out, there's email reminders, what we could do is, I'm just thinking, maybe not so much for homecoming, but maybe for prom, maybe start in February, hey, you owe this outstanding amount, and then by March, because tickets are usually on sale by first, second week in April.
And then, you know what, you've given them the opportunity to do something about it, and if by then, nothing's happened, you know, like, then I guess we...
Yeah, so maybe one thing I can come back with is, I'm going to diverge a little bit here, one of the things that I know during the interview process, and as I've talked with board members, one of the things that was really important to you, and it seemed like was important through the hiring process, was communication. So for example, one of the first things that, that the administrative team has been helping me with is relooking at our website. That came out clear and strong and clear when you guys talked to me, the website has really good bones, I spent a lot of time looking at it, there was a committee that some of our administrators ran a handful of years ago, it's got really good bones, but we are looking at a refresh of the template, restructuring, maybe somehow those headers work, so it's easier to find some information, and making sure all of the data, all of the information on there is current. So that's part of kind of the, how are we going to communicate this year? And hopefully, we're looking to refresh that website by the 1st of August, so it looks a little different, people are able to find that a little bit easier. Part of the communication plan is looking at how we notify parents just generally, and communicate with parents on a regular basis, is that consistent, is it reliable, are parents able to easily access the information that we're pushing to them? So we can include in that, just a plan around fees, how are we communicating fees and the impact of fees, and we can, I can come back and give the board a version of that.
I think in general, you know, it's great for the...
Yeah, 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 so let me, let me put it together, let me work with Dr. Engel, we can put together, we can look at what we're doing, get that documented, and then put some wrinkles in it for the upcoming year and come back, and I'll just send the board kind of, here's our plan for communicating fee impact this year.
Great, because my question to Dr. Engel was going to be like, when these notices go out, do they say, you owe X dollars of back fees, or do we go the extra step and say, prom is coming up, your child will not be able to attend prom unless you pay this, these fees? I don't know if all the parents are getting...
Sure.
...the consequence of what happens, because maybe that would bring in some money, they're like, oh my God, I didn't realize that Natalia can't go to prom because I owe X dollars in back fees.
Or not the latter.
Okay, so we don't let them know what the...
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't let them know what the consequence is, okay.
Until it's time to go, you know...
Till it's too late, well...
Feedback, good feedback.
Good, that's, that's what we can take the learning from this, this is how we can get better going forward, so, that's good.
I'll provide an update to the board then on just communication for this upcoming year, we can work on that.
Awesome, thank you so much. Anything else for old business? If not, we're going to go to the next topic, was the second reception of visitors. I'll just hold my breath in case anybody's going to approach the podium. Be safe and say we can move forward, and the last part is adjournment, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second by Drake.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Drake. Mrs. Martinez.
Yes.
Mr. Demonte.
Yes.
Mr. Drake.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone, tonight, stay safe, stay healthy, thank you, everybody, for everything.
Thank you, everyone.
Any action to you?
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good. I've been... I've been...